I was gonna ask someone at the meeting to run it, but I guess we're all here so on Zoom, so.
It definitely gives me twenty twenty vibes here.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order and pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Okay, so I don't think we have any public participation. Um approval of meeting minutes, did everyone get their minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
And they're okay, no changes needed. Yeah, they're usually excellent, so. Okay, staff report, program and service report.
Yep, so I'll talk about the expo and everything else in a couple of minutes, but I'm gonna focus mostly tonight on um the SNAP. And the nutrition and some other things that you know are going on here um for my staff report. Um you know, we had a very busy October as we always do, um full of programs that are all very well um received and well um attended. I would I I probably highlight the WISE program at CCSU as um one of them and you know several other programs. But um along with the rest of the nation, we learned about a week and a half ago, almost two weeks ago, that come November first, if the federal government were to remain closed, um that SNAP, which is more quickly called food stamp benefits, would cease. Um and in Newington, that means and they would cease for the duration of the um closed down, the federal, the the shutdown, sorry, the federal government shutdown. Um so we were immediately concerned by that because in Newington, about twenty seven hundred people receive um SNAP benefits. We don't have a list of whom, um nor do we have specific demographics for Newington because they're not provided by the state DSS. Um but for you know, probably for privacy purposes, but we know that statewide, about forty percent of people, individuals on SNAP are children. About twenty percent are seniors, older adults, and then the remaining are like ages eighteen to fifty nine. Um but if you look at households, not like the individuals, but households where somebody receives SNAP, over forty percent of the households in Connecticut who receive SNAP have an older adult or a disabled adult in the household. So you can assume that those figures would apply to Newington as well, you know, pretty similarly. So that means that almost ten percent of our population would be affected. Um so of course, November first came and went and there was, the federal government is still closed down today. Um we, meeting the Human Services Department, the Town Manager's Office and the Senior and Disabled Center, immediately jumped on what can we do to help out our local residents who would be, you you know, temporarily, hopefully not for very long, but we don't know, temporarily losing food grocery assistance. So the very day we found out, we met with the Human Services um Director Carol Lebrecht, and the Town Manager and our respective social workers in our departments, and came up with a basic outline plan. At the time, we thought that we, the information we got from the state was that any um funding left on a SNAP card, you know, at the end of October would also disappear or would also be locked. We found out a couple of days later that wasn't the case. Anybody who had a balance at the end of the month was able to carry it over, not that many people do, but. Um so we, you know, as as things continue to change, we're continuing to address it. So what we're doing now is um the, we're very fortunate that Newington is very generous and very responsive. Uh we saw that with our own nutrition funding. We see it anytime there's something in need. So immediately, the town, the Human Services Department received several phone calls from organizations wanting to do food drives. And there's a lot of food drives going on as as well. The same time, the governor released three million dollars to Food Share um to help provide food to local food banks. And while three million dollars is certainly helpful, the average need per month in the state is closer to seventy million dollars. So um it's a drop in the bucket, but something. Um here locally, um the senior, I'm sorry, the Human Services Department um is offering, they were able to obtain some emergency funding um as well as as helping in putting out the appeal for extra food drives. So any member, any Newington resident who receives SNAP, we put out a lot of messaging and we tried to coordinate our messaging to contact the Human Services Department. Again, we don't have a list if we receive SNAP, so they have to reach out to us. Um there's a very quick intake, it's like three questions, it's just to see what their needs are gonna be. It's not like the whole like you have to give us your tax returns and all that. It's just, you know, this is what you, this is who you are, this is what you need. Um Terry is helping with those intakes, our social worker is helping Human Services with those intakes. Um and then Human Services Department is providing grocery cards, um some prepackaged, like, I don't know, preset, like meal packages, I guess. Um and of course, additional food bank dates um for those who receive SNAP who need additional assistance. Unfortunately, does not cover one hundred percent of what the average person may receive um SNAP benefits, but it puts a dent in it. Um over the past, and the Senior Center for our part, I don't know if I sent you this memo, if not, I'll send it right after this um after this meeting. We are helping with logistics um in addition to intake. We are also currently storing the overflow and we will be continuing to store, I don't wanna call it overflow, but there's limited storage in the food bank itself. So right now, our stage is set up as a secondary food bank, um and will continue to be for the duration of this emergency. Um we're identifying some other areas where we could set up food as well. We are assisting with intake, we are um working together on messaging. Um you may have seen on our Facebook page and you'll see all around the center, if you're here, a flyer that we put together that summarizes like if you need help, this is what you do. If you can help, this is what you do. Um that goes out, we are also going to be assisting the people who might need rides to the food bank for like, you know, if they are doing extra visits per month and they may end up transportation problems, we will deliver um to folks who need to, similar to how we did during the pandemic. And if there's other food drops that come up, like in Hartford or surrounding towns, um that people could take advantage of, then we will provide transportation to those as well. So the response has been fast and thorough and with the um expectation that we're here to help, and we want people to understand that we're here to help, don't be ashamed to come out, you know, we'll help to get you some some nutrition um while this shutdown occurs. Over the past couple of days, um I checked the DSS state of Connecticut website like five times a day. And over the past couple of days, there's been, if you've seen the news, there's been from the federal, you know, from the president's office, there's been word of, okay, we are gonna fund SNAP, okay, we're gonna partially fund it, no, we're not gonna fund it at all, despite the court order that came last Friday. So while we hope for good news, us, the uh Human Services Department, Town Manager's Office are all working under the assumption that there will be no SNAP assistance distributed to anybody this month. Um it's kind of a prepare for the worst, hope for the best situation.
I'm sorry, I was with the Chamber of Commerce today and the committee, committee Connecticut Food Share people were there. And they said, if you make donations, dollar donations to the food bank, they could buy more food than if we go out and buy a can of green beans or whatever. They could probably get three of them from ordering from the food bank because uh they, it's like sixteen or twenty cents a pound that they charge for the food when you order it from Connecticut Food Share.
Sure, I totally understand. We are encouraging people to make cash donations, uh gift cards to grocery stores, but a lot of people do like to go and purchase that food and that is certainly helpful. There's also an Amazon wishlist.
Oh, I saw that.
Access that, you can either go on the Human Services, uh the Town, sorry, the Town's website, um and there's a link to it there. Um and basically, you can go in and and purchase items, pay for them, and they get shipped to Human Services. Um so the I, so my, my, I guess my point in this is that the information changes daily. So I'm not gonna look at something that looks like good news and get my hopes up because so far, every time that's happened, it's been withdrawn. Um the Fire Marshal's Office is always very helpful to us and to the Human Services Department um with our needs. And they have taken over like the physical, like moving of donations and everything, um which is very nice. And we are going to meet, the Fire Marshal also serves as the Town's Emergency um Operations Director, Emergency Service Director. And we're going to hold a meeting with some key departments on Friday to continue our organization, to make sure we have an organized approach in which the info is out there and it's correct and that people are getting fed.
Can I give um two things that I found um that I wanted to give as maybe suggestions or just knowledge for us to help put out there? So um one of the things is it's called GoPuff, G O P U F F. And it's a company that um and they have, I did it all the time here in Newington, so it exists here. Um they are like a convenience store type, um DoorDash type thing. Um and they have a promotion at least for the month of November, um two times you can do in the month. Um and they will give you, I think it's like twenty five dollars of free um goods that will be delivered to you. Um so I wanted to tell you about that promotion that I saw um to get, you know, to let people know, all they have to do is register their card as if you would, as if you were gonna make a payment with an EBT card, except you don't have to make any payment. You just have to put the number in and it recognizes, oh, you're an EBT person and they give it to you for free. Um so I wanted to say about that. And then the second thing that I found um is what's called a project, um a dash, and it's from DoorDash and they partner with food banks around and pantries around the area to help in delivery. So um it's, it seemed more like you would have to contact them directly. So I didn't know if, and I know we have a a large amount of seniors and you know, disabled in our towns. I I know that takes up a a percentage of the EBT, uh uh you know, participants and everything like that. So I didn't know if that was maybe something you, um you know, us as a senior center could do or either give that information to the human, um you know, the Human Resources Department, that maybe there, they have it in our area that they could help with the delivery of food banks. Because again, food banks might be further away than a store, somebody might have gone to with their card. Thus why you might be, you know, having to take people to food banks and delivery options and things like that. So that helps with any of the load. I wanted to put that out there as well.
That's great. Can you repeat the name of that program? I missed that one, I'm sorry.
It's called Project Dash. Um and if if you just search that, it's it's on Do- DoorDash's website. But it doesn't give you the where, I mean, it tells you like how many millions of people they help in areas they're in and everything, but it doesn't tell you ex- and there is a whole bunch that are in, the dots are in Connecticut. So I I don't know exactly if it's in our demographic, but I can look from the map that I can't really zoom in on too well. But there seems to be about four to five dots, at least in the, in our state, um that, so it's not something that's just like in California. So that might be able to help with getting the distributions from the food banks to the people.
Sure, so we are taking in any kind of resources or ideas that people have. I'm also doing research on um veteran-specific um assistance. Right now, what I'm finding is basically, basically same things are going out to the general public, but there are one or two veteran-specific things that I'm just kinda checking into to make sure that they're accurate, and we'll go ahead and get the word out for that as well. Um so any other, uh that's about my report for that, other than then it's a daily thing um that came about. And there's a lot of work going into it, but definitely worthwhile, and hopefully this is not a long-term uh issue.
So um a- another note of that is, cause you know, I I I do a lot of research about different topics and I've looked up this kinda stuff and everything like that. Um my concern is that it might be a a a longer um 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 emergency than we might have, than we might hope for. So my question is, I know like, you know, we did the the dance and everything like that and we wanted to do that as like a yearly thing. I'm not saying that's gonna be like a, a something that can, you know, happen, you know, like, you know, within the month or something like that. That's something I was anticipating again to do, you know, twenty twenty six and give us, uh you know, a few months leeway so that we could, you know, prepare and everything like that. But is there anything that we can think about or plan, or maybe even as a committee or something like that, to try to help the funds because in case this is a longer um endeavor, I wouldn't wanna like wait until be like, oh, well now, now December is not getting funded as well. I'd rather be on the proactive side. So I was wondering if that's something that maybe we can discuss, cause I.
Yeah, I mean, it it would be something that we would coordinate with Human Services. Um because they are really like the funders in the lead and we're like the support of like the logistics and everything else. And I should say before I forget, because you brought up a good point, um we are also offering folks ages sixteen up to join our congregate lunch, um if they're not already, um which means, of course, we're self-funded, so it could shorten our goalpost of our own funding for that program. But we all agree, the departments involved agree that um the immediate need is now for this. So you know, we can, we have enough funding to go through the end of the year, or the end of the fiscal year, I'm sorry, the end of June. Um so if we needed to do some additional fundraising a little later in the year, or ask council for some support a little later in the year, we can do so, but right now, we just wanna make sure people are fed. Now, any kind of fundraiser would probably be coordinated through the Human Services Department and we would go ahead and offer our assistance with that. So I'll bring it up to Carol. Right now, their main source of fundraising is through the Human Services Department itself and appeals for donations, either food or monetary donations, and I said the various food drives that are going on through town. So let me bring it up to Carol Lebrecht, the director, and see, you know, if they have, if they're planning anything or what their thoughts are. But this is something that we talk about daily, so um we'll definitely make sure that we let you know, we coordinate anything that that can come up.
And then the only other thing I would like to mention, because you brought up um the congregate lunch aspect of it, and I I know that this might be some more extra work and it's why we haven't like thought or voted or anything like that on it, but I would just like to mention that I feel especially the ones that are done by restaurants, the days that we have, we we brought up this before, inviting, you know, the disabled community to to make payment, you know, to be able to pay or even pay a couple of extra dollars to participate. I don't know if that funding, uh that additional aspect of funding, it might be able to then help shore up other aspects of it.
It could help shore up the congregate lunch program, but we can't like switch the funding to something else because it's specific. I think the commission, and commission, please correct me if I'm wrong, I think we discussed it and decided that maybe charging disabled folks more may not work or may not be um something that we want to approach because it could cause some folks to be offended. What we did do is, there's overwhelming results from a survey that said that people don't wanna pay more for lunch or they can't pay more for lunch. However, we did send a letter or give a letter to each participant um of the congregate lunch program that says, you know, this is why it's important that you donate those three dollars if you can, we'll never turn you away if you can't, but this is why it's important you donate these three dollars if you can. This is why it's important to, you know, if you could throw in a couple of extra dollars, we would appreciate it as well, but we don't have any, any um plans to raise our pricing right now. It's just not the right time.
And not necessarily, I I didn't mean necessarily charging the disabled community more, though that is, that is an option. But the other option would be to invite the disabled community um to participate in the ones that aren't funded directly from the, the, the state, you know, the ones that we get from the other restaurants, because they might be able to, even them just paying the basic rate, if they come in and they are willing to donate more, that might shore up some of the things. So I wanted to bring it up again of perhaps inviting that part of the community to the ones that we can invite them to.
We'd have to make a couple of changes to our own rules because we follow the same older nutrition rules even on our self-funded days, um which you must be age sixteen up or be the spouse of somebody age sixteen up. So if we wanted to, some of the younger adults with disabilities, we need to make some changes to our rules, which we could certainly look into. Uh but yeah, that's, that's an idea, something we can do.
Jamie, you once men- mentioned uh fifty fifty?
Yeah, we haven't done it yet, but we will. It's just, it's very hard to get these things done right now, but yes, that's something we have coming up for the winter.
I didn't know if it was an easy thing to to get going, but.
Um I think once we get it going, it won't be so bad, but you know, we wanna watch our timing too.
Okay.
Do you mean a fifty, a fifty fifty raffle? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, well, it looks like we're all doing, everyone in town is doing the best they can right now. It's a pretty horrible situation. Um. So, alright, so that was the program and service report. Old business budget update?
Yeah, so believe it or not, it is budget season for town employees. Um the budget memo will go out shortly. We have to get our requested budgets in for next year. We will sure, we'll be instructed to do a zero percent increase as we are every single year, which is fine. But I believe what I'm going to do, this is very new, this is something I'm just starting to look at and work with the Facilities Department with, is um as you know, we are looking towards um in-house meal preparation for the congregate as our more permanent solution to the loss of federal funding. We have a pending grant application for ten thousand dollars that will pay for some heavy, sorry, some commercial equipment in the kitchen. We have not received um any um results from that yet. We don't know if we've received, if we've been awarded that grant. Uh but what I'm going to do is, I will be working with the um, the Facilities Department to put in the first CIP request for the Senior Center in many years, which would be items and and equipment for a commercial kitchen. We already have a commercial kitchen and it's fine, but there are some things that we, that we don't have that we need, that would make it more so that we can prepare simple, basic meals in-house. Um those, of course, that wouldn't be considered until next fiscal year, if at all. So what the plan would be is if we get the grant funding, of course, that would defray our requests and lower our requests. But it also allows us to start purchasing the items that are the highest priority and we can start producing in-house lunches so, you know, soon as we get the stuff installed. Um and then if the Town Council approves our CIP request in April, um then we could work on building out the kitchen even more and increasing that in-house capacity even more. So that is something that's like breaking news, like brand new um in the past couple of days, and I'll have some updates for you next meeting. Other than that, you know, status quo, working on the budget.
Okay, um nutrition program?
Yeah, I kinda just touched on that. Through the end of the year, that may be a little bit shorter than the, a- again, into the fiscal year, um through donations, through Town Council allocations, through the um, a very small amount of ARPA funding that's left. And of course, you know, um free lunches, people donate, that type of thing. So um we always keep an eye on it. If we do see a lot of people due to SNAP come in and take advantage of our um program, then of course, we'll keep an eye on our budget. But other than that, we're just doing the same, planning for the future, um hoping that we can really get, we're looking at all the things that we need to do to become like an in-house um service provider for the food. And uh in the coming weeks or probably, probably not till after the holidays, because everybody wants us to leave them alone. We're gonna go tour a couple of other senior centers. I'm so sorry, these lights are on a, these lights are on a um sensor, so we are not moving around enough in here. There we go, okay. Um so, so anyway, um yeah, it's just the two of us in here not moving. Um so that will be, you know, part of the components of the plan, of course, are budgetary, um equipment, volunteers or and or employees, if we have to hire a part-time kitchen manager, somebody with some food experience and some uh um like serve safe experience, great. If we can get a volunteer to do it, even better. Um and let's say, equipment, oh, and our food licensing with the Health District and the required training to make sure that we have the proper food licenses to do what we wanna do. Uh nutrition, planning, menu planning, all of that stuff. All these are all components of of creating an in-house um dining service.
Wow.
Another big project on top of big projects, but this would be a permanent, long-term solution to our funding issue.
Hmm, it sounds like it's gonna happen all the time. Okay, um SNAP program, I think.
Oh, yeah, I definitely got ahead of myself there, didn't I? I am sorry. Yeah, we just finished discussing that.
Alright, security system?
Yes, so our security system is up and running with the exception of one more exterior camera that needs to be installed. Um so there's signs on our doors now saying you're being recorded, the staff is aware um of it. We can kinda pull it up on the screen and see. It's not like somebody's sitting there watching a monitor all day long, but you know, we could pull it up on the screen if there's something going on, um IT can help us um save something if we needed to, otherwise it's retained for thirty days. But basically, the, all the hallways in the building, the main office area, the gift shop and all the parking lots are now um under video surveillance, so, which is more helpful for like accident purposes or anything else. We're hoping we could bring our buses back so that people don't steal the catalytic converters, you know, if they do, we could find out who they are really quickly, um that type of thing. So that's where we are with that.
Okay, um will all the rooms have a camera or no?
No, we purposely do not have ca- um cameras in the program rooms for like privacy and people not wanting to be on camera all the time or unable to discuss things freely if they're on camera all the time or participate in programs that they may be embarrassed about if they know they're being recorded, that type of thing. So the initial phase is for the hallways, office, outdoors, gift shop. Now, that doesn't mean that Phase Two is coming next year. I'm gonna determine what the priorities are for Phase Two. I am thinking probably the cafeteria, um and possibly the auditorium, maybe not so much like the small conference rooms where people are discussing, you know, delicate topics, but that's probably going to be where, where we go from there.
And the gym because of injuries, would that?
That could possibly be a Phase Two, sure. We don't have one now. People are like, I don't wanna be on camera when I'm exercising, and that's pretty valid, you know, even though nobody, literally nobody's watching it. Um if, you know, I I understand people's want, um desire for privacy.
And it's just video recording, right? Not audio?
Um, good question. I I think it might be both, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. I, yeah, I don't know, I'll have to check, I'm sorry. I know we looked at a couple of different options. It's getting loud over there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Door counter?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have any update on that.
I think that's the longest item on the agenda.
Yeah, I forgot, I'm sorry, during my staff report, I, I normally I kinda show you the numbers, but um we have a total available in our budget um for use right now. Our coffee shop is sixteen thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars, our gift shop is fifty-three thousand one hundred and fifty. We have in membership donations, um I'm sorry, this is membership fees, sixty thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars. Fitness membership, thirty-three thousand, donations, not nutrition, seventy-two thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars. Um donations for nutrition, fifty-one thousand dollars, which includes um a recent grant recipient, and that does not include ARPA funding or Town Council allocated funding. And then the interest total now, don't forget they're a month behind, so you're not seeing the new stuff yet, is twenty-six oh six.
And what's the grand total? Do you?
Two eighty-nine, nine twenty-four.
Two eighty-nine, nine twenty-four. Did we get that extra money put in the stiff account?
Yes, but it won't show up for like two months because of the way it's reported.
Okay, but it's in.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, good, okay. Uh, let's see, new business, upcoming activities?
So tomorrow is our expo. We are doing a food drive, so please bring your non-perishable food items with you um when you come. It be, it's open to the public from ten to noon, which doesn't sound very long, but it's very hectic and people go in and out and then, then we're done. Um we have fifty-five vendors, including the Giving Garden, who's going to be doing probably the nicest and biggest plant sale I've ever seen of some beautiful indoor plants. It, the plant sale will go on tomorrow all day, but then also for the library book sale that's coming up. When we're done with the expo tomorrow, the library book sale sets up for Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Um I could tell you right now, but just by having those plants set up now, we're selling things. So people will come into the main office and buying plants, including our own staff, because there's some really nice ones.
Beautiful.
Beautiful, so um we will have again fifty-five vendors, that is the most we've had. And what we're seeing is that from the vendors, you know, there's four different, five different levels of participation. There's a title sponsor who pays five hundred and fifty dollars, just one, and then there's gold, silver, bronze and vendor. And they pay, depending on if they're nonprofit or profit, they pay between fifty and three fifty for a table. And like the gold sponsors get more advertising and everything else, the people who are vendors just get the table. But what we're seeing is that we have more gold sponsors than we've ever had. Um so last year, we, I thought we had a pretty successful expo and we netted about forty-five hundred dollars from it. Um you know, after our expenses, I am estimating, give or take a, you know, a hundred dollars or two, um that we will net between sixty-five hundred and seven thousand dollars this year, because we have so many higher level sponsorships that we sold. So, and we keep our costs very low for the expo. So um please stop by, it's well worth it. We have um CCSU Health Clinic is going to come and do cholesterol and blood glucose, glucose screenings. Um we will have, I guess, a many vendors, lots of giveaways, raffles. We do vendor bingo, which is fun, so you get a card in your program and you go around to the different vendors on your card, have them check them off, and you could be entered to win raffle prizes with your completed card. Uh we will have cider and donuts, we will have the coffee shop will be open, the gift shop will be open as well. Um so come, come see us. It's a big, big event.
I would just like to say for the record, woo, and good job with the extra, um the extra vendors.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, there's such a fabulous turnout that the vendors have been very happy.
Yes, they have, and I think it's a good value. We did bump up our prices for the vendors a little bit last year. We might look at doing that again next year. I just don't wanna go too crazy of, you know, pricing them out, but you know, I went to a couple of different, like fairs, like health fairs or whatever this year, and I think ours is definitely like the best and the most crowded, so we'll take that into account. Also, coming up next, um Veterans Day Ceremony is on Veterans Day, next Tuesday, November eleventh at eleven AM. It's open to the public, it's in the auditorium. Um so we do send an invitation to our members who are listed as veterans in our system, and we invite them to a coffee hour beforehand, just, you know, for our members, we'd love to accommodate the whole town, but we don't have the capacity. But everybody is invited to the um, to the ceremony. Um and then we just again have a full list of programs coming up in November. We have um a lunch and learn about VA benefits specific to funerals and burials. We have medic programs explaining um meditation or or practicing meditation. The last installment of our Fall Wise Program is coming up on the eighteenth, and I think that one, yeah, that's the one's gonna be here at the Senior Center, not over at the campus, so we hope you can come to that. Our evening program is uh Monday, the seventeenth at six-thirty. It's my, um, Barb and I switch off on doing the evening program, so this one's my turn. And we're doing a sing-along with Jack, who is somebody um, like a local entertainer who does great work. Um we are, gosh, I have so many things. We have a program on understanding your energy costs and your energy bills, that's coming up on November thirteenth. We have um some holiday crafts coming up this month and next month, and um we are have a um, how do I express? So it's fall prevention, um but it's like the co- the components of like balance and fear and everything else. That's coming up on November seventeenth.
Wow, nothing to do at the Senior Center.
Oh my gosh, every day and every evening too, it's the way it's going now, so I love it, I love it. The days go by fast, there's so many people around the building, it's packed, everybody, most people seem happy, so we're, we're good.
Well, every time, and I'm there twice a week now, and people just see. Well, every time, and I'm there twice a week now, and people just seem very happy. Um, I haven't heard any complaints, so.
It's great.
That's a, that's a good thing.
Thank you.
Uh, building update?
Yep, um, so the reason we're in the multipurpose room right now, so this may be our home for the next couple of months of meetings. Um, the A and B meeting room is, is currently being transformed into the exercise room. Our facilities department gave it a fresh coat of paint, moved the TVs across the hall, um, and wired them, put in a couple of ex- extra electrical outlets to accommodate the machines and worked with Barb on the layout. The last thing we need to do before we can move um, officially is the flooring, the rubber flooring that's in the current gym is going to get installed like next Monday-ish. Um, that's coming from a local vendor. So as soon as that's done, they're going to move everything over and, and we'll be good to go. I am leaning towards, we still haven't, you know, we've debated what we're going to use the old exercise room for. Um, because it's kind of narrow and long. I believe we are going to use it for smaller programs and meetings, so that might become our meeting room. Um, but we'll figure it out. I think there's Zumba going on across the hall. I don't know if you can hear the music, but it is loud. Um, so there's that. Um, other than that, we had our deep cleaning, our twice-a-year deep cleaning for the center. Um, there will probably be some, I like to go, there'll probably be some work, ah, I knew it. We have to figure out how to use this room for our meetings at night. Um, there will be some work going on in our parking lot with some drainage that belongs to the town that they need to do. I don't know if that'll happen before the winter though. Um, so yeah, there's a lot going on. We, we love having the support of our facilities department and, and parks department.
Hey, the Giving Garden project?
Yep. So, um, we are, we have a work order in for the pallets to be removed. And we'll be breaking down the in-ground beds. It looks like it's going to rain on Saturday. Um, so, but the staff will be working on that here and there, uh, you know, throughout. I'm also beginning to, I am confirming the supplies that we need. Like I know what we need, but I'm confirming the quantities with the layout that we agreed upon, Karen, that you showed me, um, with the garden folks. So we will be actually starting to order the supplies. They will be stored securely in the garden, covered up. It's like the, the, the um, pavers for the raised beds. We'll have those delivered right to the back. We'll cover them up with heavy tarps for the winter. Um, we're starting to get into various components of that while finalizing the layout with um, facilities and making sure the experts see it and don't see anything wrong, you know, with, with it. Um, and seeing if we can get the irrigation installed over there as well. So then what we'll do is we'll take it, we'll keep eyes on the forecast and if we have a mild day in winter, mild weekend day in the winter, or you know, as soon as we start the, having the, the ability in the spring to do it, we'll get on it so that it's done for spring season, rather than waiting, picking a date, ordering supplies and then it being like a, you know, um, downpour, you know, that whole weekend, which is what happened every weekend in the spring last year. So, we're very excited about that project and it's what's, it's what we're going to be working on. And I will, I, I definitely owe some communication to the garden group. It's just, the SNAP thing got a little bit crazy. I will put everything in email to everybody so that they know what's going on. We know we are working on it. You know, we're not just sitting there not doing anything.
Well, I read to them the email, the message that you sent me and they were happy with it, so.
Hey, good. Yeah, we were initially going to do some cleanup on Saturday. The weather forecast right now is not favorable. But if it's wrong, I certainly went over there with a couple of staff members and do a little bit of work. But we're going to get the pallets out of there. Um, and a bunch of other things. So it'll be, it'll be great.
Okay, great. Um, purchase requests?
I have one. Okay, let me explain it. Um, there are some folks and volunteers who smoke at the senior center. Um, and there's nothing that prohibits you from smoking on town property. But the state law requires that folks who smoke on town property have to be twenty-five feet away from a door, an operable window or an air intake. Okay? Um, we don't have operable windows anymore, so it has to be, and our air intakes are on the roof, so it's not really a concern. Um, so we have to find, we had to find a place for folks to smoke that's twenty-five feet away from a door. Right now, anybody who prefers smoke does so right outside of the cafeteria entrance, the door that is not the sliding door, because it has an overhang in a bench. Um, unfortunately, of course, that doesn't meet the state law requirements and we've had some complaints. Um, conversely, I've had complaints from people who say, hey, I, I can smoke here. This thing says like, you know, no law says you can't. Um, so, we worked with facilities to identify a spot further down the sidewalk that's still, it's twenty-five feet away from the door. So it meets the state law. Uh, but it's not like, it's still very accessible. It's not like out in the parking lot or like on some random like grass, or you have to go like around the building or something like that. Um, they're going to build it right off of the sidewalk. And if you've ever been to Mill Pond Park, you know those benches they have around the pond? They have a concrete pad that's maybe four by six feet and then a bench. Those come in a kit. So we're going to have our facilities department install one of those kits um, adjacent to the sidewalk. It's actually, if you look out the window from the gift shop, it'll be adjacent to that sidewalk. So it's not a um, place that's going to impede people who are walking by because that's not used very often. But it's also very accessible to people and it's a safe place to have one. Those cost fourteen hundred dollars. Um, but we don't have much of another option. It's probably the least expensive option that we found um, to provide, you know, that, that spot for people to do that. Um, and it is per the state law and it follows all the state regulations. So they will do the work for us, but we have to purchase the pad and the bench kit and that's a fourteen hundred dollar purchase.
Who does the work?
Facilities and um, parks will do it. So it'll be flush to the side, it'll be flush to the sidewalk, but it can't be on grass because then you have accessibility issues. So it's like a four by six piece of concrete pad that's going to be flush to the sidewalk along the sidewalk, kind of near the gift shop sidewalk, if you're looking outside the gift shop.
So that's not near the door though, right?
No, it's twenty, twenty-five feet isn't that far, believe it or not, but it is more than twenty-five feet away from any of the doors. It was the best.
Do we have a lot of smokers?
I haven't taken count, but we have a decent number, yes.
Oh, okay. I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so. And right, so right now they sit right, right next to the door, which isn't great because the smoke does come inside, you know, the smell of smoke comes inside the building. So we want to make sure that we adhere to the state law.
Okay. Um, so we need a motion?
Yes, please. It's a fourteen hundred dollar um, kit that provides for a concrete, flush concrete pad and a bench.
This cap, you'll make the motion?
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
So carried.
Two ayes.
I, 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 I have, I hope, but it, it carries.
It's not something where I want to get into the politics of allowing smoking or not, but we do need, if we, you know, we do need to follow the state law, so that's what we're asking to do.
And it is a public building, so. Um, okay.
I'm surprised it's not more feet away.
Um, it's not near any door and it's on the, probably the least used sidewalk we have on the facility. And it's also the safest place to have it, so, you know, to avoid trips and falls and everything else.
I agree, it's a good thing to have because then you have a specific place to go, but.
Yeah, and then it just becomes enforcement of it and you're changing people's like, you know, um, habits, I guess, of, of sitting there.
Alright, um, next meeting date and agenda, it happens to be December third. Is that okay for everyone?
That's Wednesday, December third?
Yeah, it would be six o'clock.
Yep, good for me.
Okay.
Good for me.
Fine for me.
I'll send an email to everybody else. Um, and I will send you, I have a bunch of stuff on the SNAP, all the materials. Um, I'll, I'll send it to everybody so you could see it and the folks that weren't able to be here tonight could see it as well.
Well, I just, I think it's great that the state is jumping into doing something. I mean, we can't fund the whole thing.
The state gave, the state gave three million dollars and he said that lasted about two weeks.
Yeah, not even, but, um.
But this may end. I have my fingers crossed after this election that maybe the Republicans and Democrats will play nicely and end this thing, so.
Yeah, I hope so too. It, it's so much more than just the SNAP benefits, of course, so hopefully we'll, we'll get that. Again, we always plan for the worst and we always make things work here, so we'll continue to do that.
And that's a good way to do it. We've been successful with that.
Right.
So, okay, um, I don't think there's any public participation. Um, someone want to make a motion to adjourn or is there anything else anyone wants to talk about? No?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, yes, there is something. We had a great article in the Newington Life.
Oh, Newington Life. Mark, Jamie?
Right, yeah. Yep.
So I don't know if you've all seen it. Um, it's great.
I emailed it out to the group. I'm trying to figure out how to post it on Facebook. They don't have it, like a link to it directly. It can only link like the whole newspaper, but I'll figure it out.
Yeah, I tried to figure out how to send it because there were some people that wanted to see it, but.
If you go to Newington Life online, can't you like highlight it and like copy it?
I, good question. I'm not sure how that works with like copyrights stuff.
I've done something like that before.
Yeah, I'm sure we could figure out a way.
Or, or cut it out of the paper and scan it in.
Yeah, we can do it that way, sure.
Okay, so um, adjournment?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Someone want to second it?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Have a good night, everybody. Thank you for joining us online. Karen, have a quick recovery. Good night.
Yeah, I'll go put my ice pack on it now.
Yep, good luck.
Thank you. Alright, bye-bye.